... the meeting to order, want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session has been held on Thursday, March 26, 2015, at 5:00 PM in the fifth floor conference room for a healthy communities update. Immediately following will be an executive session in the ninth floor conference room regarding labor. Roll call. Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters? Philbrook? Walker?
Here.
Townsend? McKernan?
Here.
Mugia?
Here.
Maddox? Holland?
Here. Thank you very much. I believe Commissioner Townsend is going to try to call in by phone, so we'll try to connect her as soon as she does. We have tonight a healthy campus update with a number of issues. And we would just want to keep in keeping with the plan of having something in front of the commission, at least quarterly. This, we're not planning on a long conversation tonight, but if you have additional questions, we'd be glad to take them, but we want to make sure that all the progress is up to date. So before we do that, though, I think Mr. Bach has an introduction to make.
Thank you, Mayor. If you look across the room, I would, I'm happy to announce my new Assistant County Administrator that is here tonight. It's her first time appearing with us. She officially gets started with everything next week. This is Melissa Munt. She comes to us from Ames, Iowa, where she was an assistant. I believe I've sent out some information to all of you.
No longer the Lone Highway.
We hired a non-Catholic from Iowa.
Okay, so you get it right off the bat.
I got it when I got out of my car, so.
Pretty much goes from here.
I was the welcome committee in the garage.
Yeah, that's good. In the middle of that, where you're hanging out. Melissa, welcome. I'm done.
All right. Well, with that enthusiastic introduction, welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here, and I guess you start officially Monday.
Yes.
All right, welcome. All right, so we're going to turn it over to Rob Richardson to lead off the healthy campus update.
Jason, you want to turn on this slide? You all may recall that in December, we adopted the downtown Parkway District Plan. It was a long process, lasted just about a year, that included significant public involvement. The area of the plan was from, really in the area of 10th and Minnesota, 10th and State, but it extends from Waterway Park at the bottom right of your screen there up to Sumner High School at the top left of the screen. Like I said, significant public involvement, lots of open space and green spaces. But we really started this plan because we had two big projects. We had a grocery store project and we had a community center project. We thought that those are two great projects, but if we put them together, we might be able to come up with a greater vision for the area and have significantly more impact on the area. And so that was the, why the plan process was initiated, and you all are familiar with the outcomes of that. I'd like to talk about the timeline for just a minute here. As the mayor mentioned, we planned on being before you about quarterly. This will actually make about five times this year, so we beat that just a little bit. We were here with the kickoff of the healthy campus plan last May. We updated the commission in August. We rolled the plan out on October 9th, and then we had the adoption process in December of 2014. And now we're back tonight with further updates. But just, that's just a brief, you know, recap of where we have been with the plan and where we've been over the last year as far as being before the Board of Commissioners with updates or other matters related to the healthy campus and the downtown Parkway District Plan. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to the mayor to speak about the National Resources Network.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Jason on my staff.
Thanks, Rob.
Can you please speak directly into the microphone?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, if you recall, back in 2013, Unified Government was invited to make application to the federal Strong Cities, Strong Communities Initiative. And the whole goal of that initiative was to collect, was to connect local communities with federal resources. And so we worked with the Administrator's Office to put together a pretty strong application, and were notified in 2014, unfortunately, that we were not selected. But during that feedback and that communication, they did take note in the strength of our application. And at the same time, they were looking at creating a pilot project, which is through the National Resource Network, which operates really similar to the Strong Cities, Strong Communities Initiative in that the goal is to work with local communities on particularly challenging development projects, community development, and economic development. Make connections with those resources, and so we've engaged the National Resource Network through an agreement, and that agreement lists out several deliverables. But what I've done here is I've noted kind of the three that point directly towards the healthy campus. First, they provided $105,000 roughly in direct funding for initial implementation costs. And so as we talk later on in the presentation, you'll see where some of those direct funds are going to support. They're also serving as liaisons to other public and private partners. That's grants, that's our peers across the states, that is the federal government and all of its agencies to help us continue to move the needle on healthy living and development in downtown KCK. And lastly, and really most importantly, is they're assisting with establishing an ongoing plan for management of the campus. And if you simply note your agenda, the healthy campus is a very layered project, and that has a lot of moving pieces, a lot of different moving pieces. And one of the things that we've recognized early on is that we really want to make sure that all of the incremental decisions that need to be made continue to support the broader vision. And so we're working with the NRN and have issued a notice of need, which you see next there, for a project manager, owner's rep, to come in and provide some of that capacity and management oversight as we move through pieces of the development plan. And last and certainly not least, this is one of a number of opportunities that we've taken up as we move through this process to leverage resources. In this case, national resources through their direct funding and also their oversight. So with that, I think we'll move to an update on our CSO work from Mike Tobin.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, Mayor, as you know, Public Works has been working steadily on the combined sewer outfall or CSO plan as mandated by the EPA for several years. Currently, we are operating under a partial consent decree as we move forward toward a complete consent decree, which we're supposed to complete sometime in late 2016. There are our public works staff, a number of engineering firms, several lawyers, the EPA, all dedicated to keeping us on schedule. Many millions of dollars will be spent to correct the combined storm and sanitary sewers in our county. Part of the remedy that will be required by the EPA in this plan are green solutions. And it's the opinion of staff and several of our engineers that the healthy campus will provide an opportunity for us to develop some of these green solutions as part of the idea for that whole corridor. Now, it's a little early for the details on how all that will work out. There'll be surveys, there'll be an educational component, and there'll be some feasibility, I'm sorry, feasibility studies required by the engineers in order to get into what those will actually be. But, for example, the Big 11 feature of this project lends an interesting angle to it in terms of what we can do moving forward as we try to separate the storm water from the sanitary water. The educational component should also yield citizen input to the level where we can do smaller, easy, green solution projects with their input. And some of these things even that the citizens can do themselves, such as the planted roofs and things of that nature.
All right. I think the key to this one especially is considering the amount of money we're going to need to spend and the mandate to do green infrastructure as a part of this. The ability to leverage that program for this Waterway Park and Big 11 Lake all used to be a part of a stormwater drainage system in downtown. And so because that's the area we're going to be working in the combined sewers, there's a great opportunity to create a signature component for money we already have to spend. And to help, help the green campus, the green, the healthy campus green space could actually help provide offset to other work that we need to do in the rest of downtown. So because it lies in kind of the valley in there and where it lies geographically, putting that green space in, which green space is expensive to build, but having the EPA mandate requiring us to do green space as a part of it, we can, we can leverage that opportunity in a way that we couldn't otherwise. So I think that's a pretty important piece. The next piece is the community center fundraising. I want to say, Jason mentioned that we're going, that we're looking at a project manager, and that closes?
26.
Closes tomorrow.
Today.
Today is, yes, today is still the 26th, so it's going to close today. And that's for people to have made application to do that project manager. We've secured private funding for a full-time position for two years to spearhead the different layers of the healthy campus. So again, there's just a lot of national interest in this campus, and to have a project manager who can work with the CSO, keep a finger on that, keep track of the layers of work that we're doing with the community center and the grocery store. Having that continue to move forward, we've found that the amount of capacity it's taken internally, both to my office and to Doug's office, to manage this project, having someone whose job it is to manage this project and have it funded from the outside is really going to be an excellent way to keep this moving forward aggressively. Community center fundraising, I'm going to touch on that. We, we delayed this almost a year, the fundraising component, in order to put together the master plan. And at the end of the day, I think the master plan improves the opportunities for fundraising. I think it was the right decision to do it. It's proven to, as you've seen with the National Resource Network and others, it's the master plan and the vision for healthy living in an urban area. Trying to create a national model for healthy living in an urban area has caught the attention of a lot of people regionally and nationally. And so we're getting a lot of support for that. But what we've needed to do is to slow the, is to basically take off that time from fundraising until we had the plan complete. The plan is complete. Now what we're doing is we're working on architectural drawings for the community center so that we can have, so we have something to take to the donors with actual square footage and costs and start to cost it out so we can have something tangible to present to different donors. That, and of course, because it's in the public sector, everything has to be done through RFP. It's kind of a slow process. But we're, we've moved that out already, and we're working on, we have a funder who is going to provide some funding for those architectural drawings in place. So that's working, and we're looking forward to that. I want to say too, we have several of the Y MCA here tonight. We appreciate your being here. David Byrd, the Executive Director, we appreciate your presence here and all of you and the work that you've done. The other thing, though, that delaying it has worked out, of course, I believe things work out for a reason. But one of the benefits of the delay has been, there have been delays on the Kansas City, Missouri side as well with their downtown Y. And the delays of both of them, they're both have synced up now to where we're doing joint ASKS with the Kansas City, Missouri Y and the downtown Kansas City, Kansas Y. And going to donors, so there are several donors that are philanthropic groups in the metro area who would be willing to give to both sides. And I'll just, there are several foundations that you would be familiar with. But we have outlined a number of groups that we think we can do a joint ASK for both sides of the state line at the same time. What we don't want to do is have one group go ask them, and then six months later have the other group say, oh yeah, can you give us some too? It's much better to do a joint ASK when you can go one time, present both visions, and give people an opportunity to invest in both. So we have a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet of donors, potential donors, who could give to both sides of the state line. And we've also accumulated a list of potential donors who would give uniquely to Kansas City, Kansas, and might not be as interested in the Missouri side for whatever historic reasons or geographic reasons. So we've identified those lists. We have made, we have about six to 10 appointments that are either scheduled or getting scheduled that are significant asks, the million dollar asks of going to these groups and asking them for a major investment. We're able to leverage the initial commission investment of $6 million hinged on the matching plan, the matching funds. So that's been a great asset in terms of this fundraising. That $6 million, and the Wind Out Health Foundation, as you know, I announced last May, came in with a million dollars. That $7 million provides half of the funding that's needed for this new community center. And those two gifts have really helped energize the philanthropic community in terms of knowing that it's actually going to get built. So I'm hoping that in the next 30 to 60 days, we're going to have some significant announcements in terms of major lead gifts that are going to start knocking off that $7 million and bringing it down to zero. So that's the work that we're working on. I would say it's going well. It's just going more slowly than I want. I wanted to do all this last year. But without the master plan, without the, all the work we've done, I think it wouldn't have been as strong an ASK as we're able to make now. And coupled with having a project manager onboard, hopefully in the next 60 days, that project manager then could come in and help make sure that that's being walked through. And we have the, it's just, there's just a lot of details to be tracked. And I'm grateful to the YMCA. The YMCA has been instrumental in putting together the ASK sheet for the donors and actually accompanying us on the donor ASK. I can go and kind of share the vision. It's not my place to actually ask for the money from companies or foundations. But I can go and share the vision, and the YMCA is not shy about asking for money, and that's working out to be a very good team. So the Y has been instrumental to opening up fundraising opportunities on this, and I'm confident that we're going to get there. So that's the leverage piece from the community center fundraising that I would say is going well. It's just going slowly. But I feel like we're, I feel like we're on track, and we're going to get there sooner than later. So I'll stop with that and turn it over to George, who's going to give a grocery store update.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Commissioners. And thank you, Mayor, for that great segue. You kind of ended with, it's going a little bit slower, so thanks for transitioning over to the grocery store. And we see the first bulleted item there says, you know, hey, in 2011, four years ago, we did this AWG study. And we did. It was a late summer study. They actually updated it one time after the original report. And they, they took a look at the, kind of the downtown corridor, an expanded downtown corridor, and examined really two to three sites within that area to kind of help target in what the customer base looked like and where a successful store could be located. Based off that study, then we ended up issuing an RFP looking for developers or interested parties to bring a grocery store into that expanded urban corridor or downtown corridor. And so it kind of gave you some timeframes to base that off of, because I actually had to go back and look at the dates myself. The RFP was issued in late June of 2012, and then we really didn't put a deadline on that until the fall of 2012. By May of '13, we came back, staff had came back and said, here's, here's the responses we got from the RFP. We've had a chance to kind of vet that with all of the folks that have responded, and kind of here, here's what that looks like. Here's the sites they've selected. Here's the type of store they're interested in. And, and really, from that point, we decided to move forward with one group in particular, and that was RH Johnson as the developer, and then the Ball family as the operator of the store. And so we really began discussing with them a preferred site, which was kind of near the healthy campus area, and really started looking at draft pro formas. And, you know, one thing we found is it's, it's not easy to do an urban grocery store. There are some costs associated with, with just doing a grocery store in general, and then a plus X factor depending on where you want to actually put that store. And, and so we got to a point, we, we worked pretty much every incentive that we have in our toolbox to get to a point, and, you know, what did we find? Well, we found we still had a gap. And, and that was with the developer or the operator putting some equity into it. And, and so anyway, we had that gap. Right about the same time as we started to try to massage the gap to see what we could do about it, the discussion for the master plan with the healthy campus came about, and we said, hey, look, let's continue to look at the numbers, but why don't we wait to see what the design element of this is going to look like? And how that may affect the numbers on the construction side, whether it goes up or down. And then we really know what the number we're trying to solve for is. And so as, as that's been completed, we've re-engaged with RH Johnson and the Ball family. We kind of really talked about urban grocery store models from two perspectives. One, what does the store look like from the outside, and how do you position it? You can't just take the suburban grocery store model and plop it down at 10th and Minnesota and expect that it's going to fit or work. And then secondly, from the interior, what kind of product line do you carry? Who are your customers? How do you market for that? And, and I feel fortunate that in the discussions we've had with RH Johnson and the Ball family, that they are very open to the idea of a hybrid model. They understand that that's what it takes to have a successful store, again, both outside and inside product. So we feel that there's still a little, a little bit of work to be done from the, from financing side. But ultimately, if we can get a grocery store, it serves as a great retail engine to bring other retailers into the area. And so what we're, we're trying to transition into is, who are these other retailers going to look like, and how do they fit into that corridor? So I guess in summary, it's, we're, we're still looking at it. There's still a bit of a gap, but we're still engaged. And I guess ultimately, I wanted to leave you with, it hasn't really been four years that we've been working on this deal, but closer to two, which is still a long time.
All right. So anyway, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to take questions. Mr. Walker?
Which Ball family?
The Chaz Ball.
Sun Fresh.
Yep.
And they did a preliminary presentation at our standing committee on what, what their concept would look like. So we have heard from them. And they're successfully operating at 18th and I-70. So. The key on each of these is leverage. We want to let, if we built a grocery store and had major public incentives in it, which we will, and it doesn't leverage more growth in that corridor, I think it's just a, we don't want it to be just a one-off development. We want it to leverage other development. The same with the community center. The commitment we make from the community center, we don't just want to be a one-off development. Though I will say, based on the look of our downtown, either one of those would be a big win. But instead of having two, one or two one-off developments, if we can leverage those together to create some momentum for the downtown and get additional development, that's really what we're looking for. So that's why we've taken the time with the master planning, why we're being thoughtful moving forward. But also because of the, how comprehensive this plan is, that's why we're getting national attention from the National Resource Network, the National Resource Defense Fund. There's just a number of groups that have continued to come forward, asking how we're going to do this. We're also have been very much engaged from the beginning with healthy campus with Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They're very interested in seeing how the county-by-county health rankings have actually moved to the point of this kind of impact in a downtown area. So this is something that's being tracked by a lot of different groups, and the good news is, they're not just interested, they're actually providing funding, which is good news as well. So. Any other questions or comments?
Appreciate the update.
Absolutely. We will be sending, we're working with the grocery store right now. We had a meeting yesterday with the operator. We're going to be drafted, they're drafting up some documents, we're drafting up some documents. We're going to be exchanging those in the next couple of weeks. And the grocery store task force, which is the downtown commissioners and myself, will be reviewing that before it goes out, and we'll keep you all updated as developments come. But I don't, you know, I think if quarterly is, we just want to give these kind of brief updates quarterly so it doesn't, so you don't just wonder what's going on. Because I get asked a lot about it, and I want to make sure you have the current information. All right? All right, and I do, I did understand that Commissioner Townsend joined us, and she was here from the beginning of the meeting, so thank you for getting her connected. And.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are going to adjourn upstairs. We have an executive session for labor negotiations, and we're asking for an hour. So I'd accept a motion for an hour of labor negotiations on the ninth floor. It's been moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
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 And when are we starting that hour?
We're going to start that hour in 10 minutes. We'll give 10 minutes of transition.